Good afternoon. The Committee on General Government Operation and Appropriation of Housing is now called to order. Today is Monday, July 11th. The time now is 1:32. Public notice for this public hearing will be disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Friday, July 1st, and then on Thursday, July 7th. Again, today is Monday, July 11th, and it is now 1:32. We will be hearing Bill 311-36-COR introduced by Senator Frank Blas Jr. and co-sponsored by myself, an act to create a new Chapter 25 on Title I Guam Code Annotated to establish a Guam Criminal Law and Procedure Review Commission for the purpose of updating Title VIII and Title IX of the Guam Code Annotated. Fiscal note for Bill 311-36-COR was requested on June 9th, and it was received and disseminated to all senators via email by the Committee on Rules on June 15th. Those testifying on behalf of Bill 311-36 are invited to the panel, and we do have them here. And as we move along, they will introduce themselves in their offices, and then we will move from there. General rules of this public hearing. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read, and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Prefer we try to keep it within the five minutes. All right? Those testifying will be allowed to present oral testimony. Once you are done, please remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by the members of the committee. Question and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual's testifying is not permitted. Any violation of the general rule or conduct will result in removal from the public hearing. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for these proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum will be restricted from providing oral testimony and will be removed from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on, and that you are speaking to the microphone. You will state your name and your title for the record. Like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me this afternoon. We have the author of the bill, Senator Frank Blas, and we have Senator Telo Tydegui and Senator Joanne Brown. I would ask now Senator Frank Blas, the author of the bill, to give his opening statement. Sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Chairman, colleagues, good afternoon as well. Thank you very much, Chief Justice, and those who are going to be testifying on this bill. Mr. Chairman, Bill Number 311-36-COR is a bill that would basically provide for the establishment of a commission to review the current statutes as we have in Title VIII and Title IX of the Guam Code Annotated. You know, Title VIII is the criminal procedure code, and Title IX is the criminal and correctional code. What I have found is that, you know, there are many areas in the statutes or within these codes that have been around for ages, literally, decades, and that as a result of technology, as a result of case law, there may be the necessity for some of these changes. I then turn and I look to the experts in the field that this most affects, and that's primarily in judiciary. And at this time, I want to thank the Chief Justice and those members of the judiciary that have assisted in being able to not only discuss more, but also craft, help to craft the bill, the legislation that is here before us. In the initial, as Bill 311 is actually an offshoot of what was originally proposed as Bill 146. And in that bill, while it provides basically the same structure, the same framework as you were fighting in Bill 311, there were a couple of most notable changes that necessitated the need to be able to reintroduce the measure as now Bill 311. One of the things is that there was the discussion of the need for funding to be able to carry out this exercise. And there was also some operative language that was also put in to the crafting of this now new bill. Once again, I want to thank again, you know, first off, most notably, you know, Attorney Kanga for his continued coordination and communications with my office on this thing, and also with the Chief Justice, Chief Justice Carbelito, in being able to help to craft this and move this along. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to be able to, enough said from me. We apparently have a number of individuals that will be here to testify, and I look forward to their testimonies so that I can reserve any questions that I may have or any other comments for later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Blas. We have Chief Justice Carbelito, sir. And I'd ask, and then you'll be followed by the compiler of laws, and then the public defender, and then we will proceed to the Department of Corrections. Then we have the two public policy students, and we also have the Attorney General, Mr. Attorney General Leving Kamacho here with his staff. But we'll begin with you, Chief Justice, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee, Senator Frank Blas, the senators present, Speaker Terlahi, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Telo Tydegui. To my right, as Senator Blas has alluded to, is our deputy administrator of the courts, Attorney Andrew Serge Kanga. And as indicated, he in large part is responsible for the rewrite of this bill and doing the research and the drafting in terms of the text that you see before you today and assisting Senator Blas in providing information. And to my left, who will testify separately, is Jerry Cepeda, the compiler of laws, who has her own office that she represents to provide testimony in regards to the bill. Thank you for the opportunity to express the judiciary of Guam's support for passing Bill Number 311-COR. As I expressed to the legislative body during my State of the Judiciary address earlier this year, the judiciary welcomes the establishment of a commission as to contemplate it in Bill Number 311 as a crucial element of our efforts to build the infrastructure to continue providing an effective and efficient criminal justice services to our community. Many of Guam's current criminal statutes have been carried over from the naval government's penal code adopted from California and are now antiquated and irrelevant. During the nearly 50 years that have since lapsed, there have been many hundreds, if not thousands, of piecemeal amendments, repeals, and enactments of criminal laws in Title IX and in many other titles of the Guam Code Annotated. One substantive criminal and correctional laws, our substantive criminal and correctional laws need an exhaustive and comprehensive review. Since shortly after the introduction of Bill Number 146-36-COR, which first proposed the establishment of a criminal law review commission, the judiciary has been developing a framework for its operation. Bill Number 146 was withdrawn, and we are grateful that Bill Number 311 retains much of this substantively important provisions while also recognizing the need to provide resources to support the work contemplated. The judiciary will take the lead in the Guam Criminal Law and Procedure Review Commission, which will be comprised of stakeholders from the judiciary, the legislature, and the executive branch to include the Office of the Attorney General, the Public Defender Service Corporation, law enforcement agencies, the Department of Corrections, and the general public. The work of the commission will provide the infrastructure for the modernization of Guam's criminal code and complement the judiciary's separate work toward the revision of Guam's criminal procedural rules. Since the last comprehensive review of our criminal procedures half a century ago, there was a monumental shift in creating the judiciary as a separate and co-equal branch of the government of Guam under the Organic Act. The 2004 amendments to our Organic Act that firmly and permanently establish the judicial branch as equal to the legislative and executive branches of our government also gave the Supreme Court the sole authority to promulgate rules, practice, and procedure in the courts of Guam, including rules of criminal procedure. Because of this shift, the criminal procedure code must be reviewed to separate and abolish purely procedural provisions from the code so that they may be placed within new Guam rules of criminal procedure to be adopted by the Supreme Court of Guam under the Organic Act. The Guam rules of criminal procedure will sit alongside the long-established Guam rules of civil procedure and Guam rules of appellate procedure as the governing rules of practice in the courts of Guam. Just last month, the judiciary's Director of Policy Planning and Community Relations shared our perspective with the Bureau of Budget and Management Research regarding the potential fiscal impacts that would result from enactment and implementation of the bill. The financial support offered through the appropriation of $250,000 is welcome and will substantially cover administrative and staffing costs of staffing the commission, including hiring an executive director, who will be responsible for completion of the commission's work within a short, two-year period. The judiciary is committed to satisfying any other needs of the commission through the deployment of resources and tools already within the judiciary's operational framework, including the provision of office space, supplies, and administrative support. We are certain that the commission, sufficiently funded and adequately staffed, will offer substantive recommendations to the Guam Legislature to improve our criminal code and allow our system to improve the delivery of criminal justice in our jurisdiction. Thank you again for this opportunity, and thank you, Senator Blas, for taking the lead in sponsoring this legislation. The judiciary supports passage of Bill Number 311 and hopes for this body's favorable consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chief. Now, Ms. Cepeda, compiler of laws, Guam, ma'am.
Thank you, half a day, and good afternoon. I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to submit written testimony and this oral testimony, which I'm reading the written testimony. A copy has been provided to the committee. In my capacity as the compiler of laws, I fully support the comprehensive review of Guam's law on criminal offenses and criminal procedure as set forth in Bill 311-36-COR for the following reasons. First, the review of law contemplated in this bill is long overdue. The last such review was during the 12th and 13th Guam legislatures. It goes without saying that Guam in 2022 is significantly different from Guam in the 1970s, not the least of which is the establishment of an independent judiciary in 2004. Second, the process will be conducted by persons who have both subject matter expertise and experience in the criminal justice system. The Criminal Law and Procedure Review Commission created in Bill 311-36 would include representatives from all three branches of government, as well as members from law enforcement agencies and the general public. Third, there is administrative structure for the work of the commission, including the appointment of an executive director, and in my experience as the compiler of laws, this position is critical to oversee the operation of the commission. Bill 311-36 also provides for administrative and clerical support through the judiciary of Guam. It gives guidance for conducting commission meetings and also sets forth reasonable, if ambitious, timelines for reporting requirements. Finally, and most importantly, is the appropriated funding, because without this crucial component, the important work of the commission would not be possible. If passed into law, I look forward to working with the commission by providing technical expertise and other assistance from the Office of the Compiler of Laws as set forth in Bill 311-36, to the extent, of course, that such assistance does not conflict with my duties under Guam law and judiciary personnel rules and regulations. Thank you for giving me this opportunity, and I welcome the chance to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Geraldine Cepeda, compiler of laws. Attorney Stephen Hattori, sir, from the public defender.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Hattori. I'm the executive director for the Public Defender Service Corporation. I'm also here with John Morrison, our deputy director. And as for myself, he will also be speaking, but as for myself, I believe this is long overdue. It's been 50 years, I guess, since the last time we had a criminal law revision commission. We testified earlier in 146-36 in support of that measure as well, but this measure is really going to ensure that the work actually gets done. And the reason why is because it includes funding for the support services that will be necessary. Public Law 1293, back in 1973, was appropriated $500,000 to accomplish this task. So I think the request of $250,000 is quite modest by our standards. Back in '73, this cost twice as much. There are some amendments that we would suggest, and, you know, if you look at that Public Law 1293, there was some language in there that authorized the commission to apply for and receive grants. There may be federal grants that could help the commission perform its duties. It also allowed the commission to enter into contracts for any professional services if such work or services cannot be satisfactorily performed by its employees. And maybe, you know, it could be for like contracting a company that can compile the laws more efficiently or something like that, or maybe to hire experts in certain areas of law. Another amendment that I think would be great would be a provision that would allow the Guam Legislature to refer questions to the commission through a resolution. So the '73 law had language allowing the legislature to pass a resolution to have the commission study an area of law, possible recommendations as well. And I think that, you know, I think the public is really going to learn a lot from the judiciary as this proceeds moves forward, right? We've had the Guam Supreme Court in existence now since '94, '96, and many of their court rulings have really repealed by implication or directly current laws. So current laws, I think if we, this commission actually takes all the Supreme Court rulings and kind of like make sure that all the statutes that have been repealed by implication or directly are removed, and remedial legislation could be made to fix the problems that have been identified by the Guam Supreme Court. And I think the public will see that the Guam Supreme Court has done a lot of work interpreting Guam laws. I think the only other provision that, as a practitioner, I would hope that the commission also evaluates is, so there's basically substantive law, which is basically, you know, like all the elements required to prove certain crimes, right? But then there's also procedural law. And procedural law is completely within the domain of the judiciary under the separation of powers doctrine. The substantive law, of course, falls within the ambit of the legislature. So I'm hoping that the review commission can also look at procedural law changes that can be recommended to the Supreme Court under their rulemaking authority. Right now, the commission only really makes a recommendation to the legislature, but the legislature will pass any laws fixing the substantive criminal law, whereas the Supreme Court and the judiciary could pass rules to affect the procedural changes or recommendations that we may, you know, we may determine is necessary. But we definitely support this, and we're willing to participate in the process, and so we hope that this measure can become law. And, you know, it's 50 years, so it's a nice round number to start this whole process over again. Thank you.
Here we go.
And you are?
My name is John Morrison. I'm the deputy director of the Public Defender Service Corporation. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, glad to be here today to show my support for this bill. As Director Hattori indicated, he and I were both present over Zoom and testified in support of Bill 146-36. And although there's a lot of changes to this current bill, we're still in support of it. We believe that this is long overdue, that there really needs to be a comprehensive look at things. I think this strikes the right balance. I think this will keep someone on task and actually doing the work, whereas sort of relying or depending on volunteers has its advantages and a lot of disadvantages. This seems to make it someone's job to report to you all and to report to the judiciary. They have to be accountable for the work that they do, and it's a big task that they're faced with. They have two years to go through a lot of laws and see how they've been modified by other statute or by case law, and there are a lot of those examples out there. So with all the previous testimony, I don't have a lot more to add, but I can say that the attorneys in our office are very much in support of this idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Leving Kamacho, Attorney General. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's rare that I find myself agreeing with Mr. Hattori and Mr. Morrison, but today is one of those occasions. We also supported Bill 146-36 earlier this year, and we continue to support this iteration of the bill. What is clear is that criminal justice is an all hands on deck, requires an all hands on deck approach, and that's reflected in the composition of the commission from Guam Police Department to our office, Public Defender, as well as the Department of Corrections. I would say, as a practitioner, one of the things that has been needed has been criminal jury instructions, and my understanding is that it's been difficult to do that because our statutes themselves aren't particularly clear, and there are conflicts with case law. So anything that can clarify and improve on our criminal procedure, as well as our substantive areas of law. I would also note that the court has, evidence has changed or has evolved, and treatment courts in particular have been introduced at the court, have been very successful, but our procedure has not adopted or adapted at the same pace. So any criminal procedural changes that could reflect the reality that we have Veterans Court, Family Recovery Court, you know, ADC, DUI Treatment Court, and can recognize that those cases are going to be treated differently and have the procedure to match it, would also result in efficiencies. And the last thing I'll just note is, we appreciate all the efforts that the legislature has made to address inequities that have been brought to this body's attention, but having a comprehensive and cumulative approach would, one, create a direct vehicle for our office to work with and to provide suggestions instead of dealing with any particular senators on any particular moment in response to a particular case. So I think from the administrative side, it would actually help us to have a singular entity and a singular point of contact moving forward. So with that, thank you very much to both the sponsor and yourself.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kamacho, Director of DOC.
Good afternoon, senators. Thank you very much for inviting me here. I'm clearly in support of this bill, however, I would like to reserve my comments and submit something in writing later on so I can thoroughly look at the bill and also discuss it with my command staff. But I think, you know, like you said, many of the people here presented is long overdue, and I think it's a great idea. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. We have Julie Laxamana and Jam. I don't know how to pronounce your last name, but I'm going to go ahead and have you just introduce yourselves and then begin your testimony, please. Whoever wants me first, just introduce yourselves so I know, we all know which one's testifying.
Half a day. My name is Jam Ichem. Okay. Good afternoon and half a day, Chairman and honorable senators. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to provide testimony today on Bill Number 311-36. Like I said, my name is Jam Ichem, and I am testifying on this bill as a citizen and a member of the Public Policy Institute. While I was reviewing this bill, the first paragraph mentioned that it has been nearly five decades since the last comprehensive review of Guam's laws on crimes and criminal procedure, which means we are long overdue for another evaluation. The U.S. Constitution is defined as a living document that is being actively updated and amended to make sure that it is suitable and relevant to our contemporary society, which is why I believe this bill that initiates the Guam Criminal Law and Procedure Review Commission is acceptable and adequate to make sure that the Guam laws stated in the Guam Code Annotated is germane to this day and age. Creating a commission made up of key stakeholders and members of the public who are experts is appropriate. However, maybe adding another member with a degree and background in social work would provide a positive impact to this commission due to the fact that they specialize in observing and accommodating behaviors of members of society, hence why the Guam Department of Corrections is focusing on rehabilitation, not punishment. And with that being said, I am in support of Bill Number 311-36 because I believe that it would help our criminal justice system deter, rehabilitate, and enforce the United States Constitution and Guam laws. Thank you again for allowing me this opportunity.
Thank you, Jam. Julie?
Good afternoon, Chairman Tom Austin, Senator Blas Jr., and other honorable speakers on the floor. I am Julie Laxamana, under the Office of the Vice Speaker, as a Public Policy Institute intern for summer. I would like to take a moment to extend my gratitude and thanks for having me here to testify on Bill 311. I'm here today to show my support towards the bill as it allows experts of these agencies to adjust and amend these existing policies to better fit Guam's progressive society. With this comprehensive review, I believe the goal is to reduce crimes by determining processes and laws that are effective and outdated and creating a more forward and/or rehabilitative approach to those incarcerated to increase their chances of being a productive citizen. Including professionals to carefully examine this bill provides the opportunity for discussion and varying perspectives that could drastically impact the criminal justice system. Because of the latter reason, moving forward, I would like to suggest considering a youthful perspective that's well-versed in current events to provide input on policies being reviewed to avoid unintended consequences. Having aspects from all parties can give different angles and solutions that can contribute to establishing a well-rounded system. An example of a law that was amended due to this youth perspective is West Virginia Skyler Law. For context, Skyler's niece was murdered by her two best friends and went missing for a few months. However, her case was not pushed through an Amber Alert because it did not meet the criteria. The criteria is as follows. One, a child is believed to be abducted. Two, the child is under 18. Three, the child may be in danger of death or serious injury. And four, there is sufficient information to indicate the Amber Alert would be helpful. Because her case challenged these standards, the state's legislator from her district issued Skyler's Law to modify West Virginia's Amber Alert Plan to issue immediate public announcements when any child is arrested or injured, regardless of whether or not the child is believed to have been kidnapped. This update wouldn't have happened if the youth did not advocate for this change, and this case would also serve as an example of unintended consequences. Conclusively, I support this movement as it seeks to correct the broken system into a more unified structure, and there are no better candidates to do so other than the professionals that deal with the offenders and the justice system on the daily. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd ask the author, but he's asked that he be last. Madam Speaker, Oversight Chair, you be after. Okay. Senator Telo, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to the panel who's here today and those students who are here to testify. I hope you weren't too afraid to come up, but you did a good job in your testimony. Very good. With regards to this, I'm pretty sure we're kind of looking at what happened in the past, you know, and how this first came up, this commission, review commission. However, some of the questions I have with the composition of this review commission, are there any intent to provide any kind of stipend for those who are not members of the government that sit on the commission? And I'm not sure who I would really ask that question to, maybe the Chief Justice?
No, there is no plan to.
No, there is no plan to, to pay out any stipend to, to any non-government member. The resources that is being provided here is the seed money would be really instrumental in hiring an executive director and one staff, and that we would supplement that effort in reference to any additional staff that's needed. And as I indicated, we would be willing to offer the office space from which this commission can work out for a two-year period.
Yeah, I saw that. Thanks, and I'm sure this is going to be very, very helpful, considering the amount of money. I saw that Attorney Hattori mentioned, or heard, mentioning the $500,000 that was provided to this commission back then. I mean, that's almost equivalent to 2.5 million today, you know? And now to only provide 250,000, I'm not sure how, what changed to allow such, you know, a less amount today than it was back then. Can you kind of explain, maybe you might know more about that, Chief Justice?
Well, I, at the outset, when the, the first bill was introduced, I was, I was not really enthused, because strictly having volunteers and having this as collateral duties on the part of the judiciary that may wish to assist, it would not be given the priority considering our, our day-to-day responsibilities. But with the initial seed money and the hiring of an executive director, who very much, as I envisioned it, will act as the recorder of this commission, we feel that those, that would be sufficient resources for us to do the job, and that is to come up with a report at the end of the two-year period and recommend the various changes to the criminal code. And if I can just add, Senator Tiedegui, that really what spurred me to take a different approach is a conversation I had with Chief Justice Mark Rectonwell, the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of Hawaii, because they went through the similar, a similar experience, and they also had their own penal code commission. And that commission consisted of 29 members and, and from various cross-sections of the community, to include the chairperson of the Senate Judiciary Committee of the Hawaii Legislature, the chairperson of the House Judiciary Committee, and the public defender, the attorney general, and all the various cross-sections. And I asked him, how can such a big committee function? But, and, and, you know, some people may have questions, why, when we have 18 committee members, how can we function? But really, how they operated, because it's such a tremendous task, is they broke up into subgroups, and they broke up to subgroups that met on their own, did a specific task assigned, then every three months would come together and make decisions piecemeal as, as they went along with the, the actual committee members. And, and the way I envisioned this commission with the 18 members is also similar to spread out the task and, and, and then tap on other stakeholders who can assist. This is a tremendous effort, and I just hope that I'm doing a little justice in conveying the appreciation of what it's going to take to provide a workable report that is envisioned by Senator Blas and the members of the co-sponsors, because it's long overdue.
Thank you, Chief Justice, for that explanation. And, you know, I, again, appreciate what the judiciary is doing to ensure that there's a place to meet and provide any kind of assistance needed for this. However, in the, in Mr. Chair, as in the BBMR report, at the end, it said, "See Exhibit A." I didn't have an Exhibit A. That was, "The judiciary will provide necessary operational needs, such as office-based supplies and administrative support." And parentheses, it says, "See Exhibit A." I, I didn't get a copy of that. So maybe, yeah, it didn't. Oh, Exhibit A was the letter itself. Okay, I see. Thank you for that. Well, other than that, you know, I, I did some research and found out there's currently 185, 185 references of the Guam Code annotated that is cited, you know, in, in the law. So I'm looking forward in, in the Guam Code annotated. And it's a lot of work, you know, a lot of adjusting, also when it comes to certain laws that have to do with, you know, it's already, on the judicial side, there are certain laws that, that are done, not by law, but by precedence, that are set by the judicial branch. I mean, in their, how would you say, their findings or their orders? Does that, would that effect be required for this commission to address in putting those particular, what is setting precedents when law is not, not on the books?
It, it may, but for the most part, the legislature enacts the statutory laws. We interpret the laws, and, but there are areas in which there are gaps that we would fill in, and if it's within our authority. And so, and, and a certain extent, if there are case law that interprets certain of the statutory provisions, then those, those provisions may come into play in making the recommendation to the legislature. And I think what's very important for us to emphasize is this commission is only going to recommend to the legislature. It's ultimately going to be up to the legislature to accept whatever recommendations this commission, which I hope that in creating the commission, you have the confidence that you are bringing to the table all the stakeholders, or for the, most of the stakeholders, that have the knowledge, expertise, interests, to do the best job in trying to inform the legislature as to how to make changes that will really bring our statutory scheme up to date in reference to what has transpired. And we use references from other jurisdictions to assist us in, in trying to provide equity and fairness to what is, what will be recommended.
Okay, thank you. And last question, with regards to this particular commission versus what was done in the past. And if I'm not mistaken, that back in 1973 or '74 was covering all criminal as well as civil procedures. While this commission here is strictly with criminal and procedural law, nothing on a civil part, right? You're not dealing at all with that?
Senator Tiedegui, if I may respond?
Okay, there. Yes, please.
Public Law 1293 was specifically for the Criminal Procedure Code. I believe what you may be referring to was the, the big reorganization, perhaps in 1970, when the Guam codes as a whole were reorganized. So in 1977, with, I believe it was 1293 that created the Criminal Law Revision Commission, or the, the reform and revision, the eventual enactment was Public Law 13185. The Criminal Procedure Code was 13186, and changes to existing laws were 13187. So that was in, that was back in the 19, in 1977-ish, at that time period. So the focus for this particular commission, again, would be strictly the Criminal Correctional Code in Title IX, as well as Criminal Procedure Code, understanding now that there is an independent judicial branch with the authority to promulgate criminal procedure rules. One limitation that I did note, that I don't think would be surprising, were, is the fact that there are also criminal laws sprinkled throughout the GCA, not strictly in IX. So there may be a need, should the commission, during its evaluation, find perhaps in Title X, an existing criminal type of offense, it would be pulled out of X and perhaps put back into IX or moved into IX.
Okay, that's, okay. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it. And that's all the questions I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tiedegui. Senator Brown, you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I certainly appreciate everyone who's come today to provide testimony. I think we can all concur, it's been a long time, for those of us a little over 50, it's, hopefully, we're not too old. But I think we can recognize and appreciate the need to, to have the updates. I'm sure as cases come before you, certainly Chief Justice in your court and to the lower court, I'm sure they're going to be, there have been times when the inconsistencies, or of course, the piecemeal over time of legislation that's been introduced, may not all connect, and ultimately, maybe justice as we would desire is not being provided to our community. And I think ultimately, that's what we want to see. I certainly defer to you and collectively the, the proposed membership here to address that. We certainly look forward to seeing your, what recommendations come out, because I think in the end, we want to have a judicial system that works effectively. And again, we want to ensure that justice is properly administered in our community. I mean, I think with the growing challenges that we're dealing with, you know, our people have a lot of reservation about these issues, and certainly to make things more understandable and effective for you on your side to administer the work that you need to do, we hope ultimately will benefit our citizenry. I did note in the bill that you will meet the public notice requirements for your plenary sessions, which is, which is fine. I see that the other sessions that the commission will have will be working sessions that don't require public notice requirements. I see that the members are being exempted with regards to filing, as they would for other public positions and other appointed positions we have in the government with regards to financial disclosure and things of that nature. I can understand that, I am assuming that the intent is temporary in nature, but I think, Mr. Chairman, we probably need to amend and clarify the timelines. I see, you know, the timeline is outlined, and the timelines outline when the commission is going to provide its recommendations to the legislature. But I think if the intent is that this is for a period of time, we should, we should put a timeline on it, when does the commission dissolve? Or do we want to recommend over a period of time, so we don't, don't end up in a 50-year situation? You know, maybe the judiciary can also recommend, should this, you know, should this particular commission or this form of a commission meet? Should it be every five years, every 10 years? Rather, you know, chip away at it, rather than waiting so long, because it, it really makes the task of the work that you have to do quite significant, because you're looking at, over a period, you know, such a long period of time, and obviously, so many pieces of legislation that have been put in place. So maybe the recommendation can be added, and we can certainly amend it, Mr. Chair, and certainly to the sponsor, there's no objection. If we can address what a reasonable, maybe judiciary or Mr. Chief Justice, would you have a recommendation? What a reasonable timeline? Should the commission meet every five years or? And then we can add that and incorporate it in, in the bill when we address it on the floor, the committee can, can amend it, so that, again, we don't end up in a situation where such a long period of time has passed without addressing these issues.
Yep. My understanding is, the experience of Hawaii, you're, you're exactly correct, that they then, as a result of submitting the report, that there then was subsequent legislation that had the commission come together, I think it was every 10 years, but I may be mistaken, and it could be five. But there was an interval where the laws would be surveyed again for any updates at a certain interval, and that was by statute.
Okay. I mean, and certainly if judiciary has a recommendation prior to the bill getting on the floor, perhaps the committee can address that in a substitute version. Again, I think we just need to put a reasonable period of time in place, so that, you know, the work of the commission for this initial assignment that this bill would, would ask for, once it's completed, then, again, maybe it gets reactivated within, I'm just throwing out five years, it could be 10 years, maybe you can come back and let the committee know what would be a reasonable timeframe to put that, so we can include that in the bill. Other than that, I have no, no issues with the bill. I think it's very timely. Certainly appreciate the efforts of Senator Frank Blas in sponsoring this legislation. I'm sure there are many other areas of our statute, even aside from the criminal-related legislation that's been passed and adopted into law, we probably need to clean up. I'm sure the compiled laws, probably, she's smiling, has recommendations with regards to that, and that may be something down the road we should also look at. I appreciate the fact it's only $250,000. I mean, if you look at the early 70s, our government was far, far smaller than it is today. And when I first came in legislature in the 90s, it's half the size and cost that it is today. I mean, in 20 years, the government has practically doubled in operational costs to the people of Guam. So certainly anytime it can be done, and I appreciate the support the judicial branch of government is providing to help facilitate in addition to the, the funding. And in this case, again, I'm, I'm very conservative with regards to spending. It's just my nature. I try, I try to make sure we're responsible, because I know everything that goes up, and it's going up, is all going to come down. And I want to make sure we land a lot more comfortably than, than what I've seen in the past. So I appreciate the fact that you're willing to be able to do this at half the cost that was done in the early 70s. But again, I have no, I have no further questions, Mr. Chair. I certainly would be supportive of this legislation and look forward to the recommended timeframe from the judiciary on when the council can reconvene to readdress issues in a timely manner moving forward. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to ask questions and comment.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just follow up in Senator Joanne Brown's suggestion, and we will do a little research, just to see other jurisdictions, because we know Arizona, Texas, they had the same type of penal commission, and we'll look at what a reasonable period of time is and provide our own experience and what we feel, and then we'll submit a recommendation in writing to the, to the sponsor of the legislation.
Appreciate that, Chief.
Yep.
Hopefully, we'll get it expeditiously, not, not two months from now.
Yes, we will do that expeditiously.
All right. Thank you. All right. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't, I can't seem to upload it right now, but can you tell me the composition of the previous commission? The 1970s, the 1973 Law Review Commission?
Public Law 1293, I, I'll have to look it up. Sorry. I really, I don't remember. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I don't remember the composition from Public Law 1293 offhand. I can try and look really fast for it.
Okay. I'll look it up, too, but I, I guess I just wanted to know if, it was my understanding that it was led by the Office of the Attorney General.
I'm sorry. The public defender did, does have a copy. Thank you, Steve. The composition, three members from the legislative branch appointed by the speaker, one of whom shall be the chairman of the Committee of the Judiciary, who shall be chair of the commission. Two members appointed by the governor, one member from the judicial branch appointed by the judicial council, one member from the Guam Bar Association, to be appointed by the GBA president.
Okay. Yeah, I was curious about that, because I've looked over some other jurisdictions as well, and I guess they're all over the board, but almost all of them have mostly lawyers on it, appointed from their bar associations. I see the previous commission had from the Guam Bar Association. I think that we should consider that for sure, that they be part of the composition. And members appointed by the governor, I've seen in some jurisdictions as well. Some jurisdictions, I think California appoints all their members from, or all their members are appointed by the governor. And, and many of them, of course, from the legislature, include, including committee heads from the legislature. But, yeah, the reason I'm curious is because at the last hearing we had on almost the identical bill, the, one of the issues that came up was the role of the judiciary in a law review commission, making recommendations as to laws. And I guess I wanted to ask you who are present here, because that's not done in every jurisdiction, for sure. They don't include the judiciary. And at the last hearing, it was said by some who testified that that might pose a conflict of interest, since the judiciary, particularly, you know, the, the justice, and the judges themselves are the ones ruling on these laws. And the bill has, in its current form, the proposal that three members will be appointed by the chief justice, of whom one shall be a member of the general public with experience and interest in the services provided by community-based and public interest organizations relating to the criminal justice system. And then, in another part, it says, "The chair of the commission shall be an appointee of the chief justice and shall be a judicial officer." And I thought that's, those were the provisions that I even, I think even you, Mr. Kanga, brought up, and Attorney Kanga, and that some representatives from the Attorney General's office at the time brought up. office at the time brought up. So I, I guess I want to know, and that's not done in other jurisdictions necessarily, so I want to know, do you think we should do that on Guam? Do you think there is a conflict with our laws being proposed or written by members of, what did it say? Judicial officers? And maybe we should just clarify, judicial officers mean judges, is that correct? Right?
That is correct.
Correct.
If I can answer your question, Madam Speaker. My name is Andrew Serge Kanga. I am the Deputy Administrator of the Courts, and former compiler of laws for several years, before stepping away from that position. To address what was testified on earlier this year, it was by the Administrator of the Courts, and we did raise that as a concern, a potential conflict of interest, if, depending on the role of the judicial officer or of any member or employee of the judiciary, and we did suggest additional language be inserted into the law, if that was still going to remain the case. And in the, in Bill 311, we did clarify that judicial officers or anybody, anyone appointed to the, to the commission will serve to the extent that is allowable under whatever ethical obligations that were applicable to them, whether they be statutory or regulatory. I think the language encompasses everything. And the models that we followed from the various jurisdictions, including the state of Hawaii and the District of Columbia, and we noted this in our research, too, that in many other jurisdictions, it was very common for judiciary employees and judicial officers, judges, to be parts or to be members of these law revision, criminal law revision commissions. And I think it made sense, especially given the added language there, and ultimately, keeping in mind that the committee would only make recommendations to the legislature. And the legislature would ultimately have the authority to enact the amendments or repeals of law that were recommended by the committee. And going back to the work of the subcommittees, I think that's the important thing here, that each subcommittee would be composed of various members of the plenary commission, depending on their area of expertise. And so you might have one subcommittee doing the procedural part, one doing criminal jury instructions, one may be doing some other specific area of criminal law, and they would work together to look at various effects, laws from the entire code, if they're applicable, whether they could be consolidated into one, one particular part of Title IX, for example. And then go from there, recommended to the plenary commission, which would meet in an open, I'm sorry, a publicly noticed meeting, they would make the final determination of what would be a recommendation, and then submit that to the legislature. So with that, and I think maybe to address a question that Senator Tiedegui raised earlier, on why we were only asking for $250,000, and I think because technology and its force compiler, and I can speak to this, and Jerry, too, that everything has been digitized. From the laws of the first Guam legislature, when I was compiler, we digitized everything, and so everything is available in electronic databases, which makes our work that much easier, way, way easier than I think the commission in the 70s faced, when everything was done manually, by paper and pen.
And if I can just add, Madam Speaker, that the commission is not the voice of the judicial officer or officers that may serve. The voice of the commission is made up of the 18 members that compose the commission. And if there's a vote, and a judge is on the commission, and he or she is outvoted, then his or her voice doesn't even carry. So it's not a judicial officer's position that necessarily is going to carry the day for whether or not the legislature decides to adopt a recommendation. It is the position of the commission as a body who will be making the recommendation, and I assume by majority vote, if there is a, any difference in position, in any recommendation that is ultimately trying to be pushed forward. And, and as I, as we did more research, the Chief Justice of Hawaii, in a letter to the Speaker of the House of Representatives, very much said that the Penal Code Review Committee was comprised of 29 members, including judges, appellate, circuit, and district courts on their commission, and this was back in 2015, and they've been quite successful in updating their penal code commission. Laws, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public defender, the Attorney General's office in particular, want to comment on that?
Speaker, I believe Chief Prosecutor O'Malley appeared at that hearing, and I doubt he would have talked about any potential conflict. I do recall the discussion, and one of the proposals was to divide Chapter Eight and Chapter Nine review, because one of them, the judiciary potentially had more of a conflict with reviewing than the other. But I don't recall Chief Prosecutor O'Malley kind of pointing out there would be a potential conflict.
So what about you? Do you see any conflict in the judiciary having three members on a commission that is going to make recommendations as to what criminal law should look like?
Depending on who the Chief Justice chooses, the description that was given, it sounds like it would be a service provider for one of the treatment courts that would be required as a member of the commission, and I think they would be a valuable part of assessing that. So it really just depends on who they ultimately decide on. I don't believe it would go to the integrity of the commission, as Chief Justice mentioned, there's 18. We're not always going to get our way. I'm sure we will differ with public defender on some of these things, as we have many times in public hearings before this body. But with 18, you know, having to get to the votes, you're going to hopefully get a better result in the recommendation.
What if there are judges who are appointed?
Again, Speaker, we, we appear before judges, and we agree and we disagree all the time, so I don't think it would be any different in a commission. I think it would actually have, provide for a more candid discussion as to what we believe the rules are, and how it would be more accurately reflected in the laws written.
So you don't have a problem discussing with judges the laws as, and what recommendations we should make to change those laws? And the same judges who are going to be ruling in your cases on those laws, and interpreting those laws, or deeming them invalid or unconstitutional?
We, as a matter of right, we often appeal or defend appeals in criminal cases that deal with the interpretation and implementation of our criminal procedure, as well as our substantive laws. So again, I don't really think that changes too much. We don't have a ton of interaction with the Supreme Court justices, but that would really just be the choice of the Chief Justice as to who sits as, on the commission itself. But we disagree with the trial judges, they know it, and many times, and public defender disagrees with the trial judges, and we go up on appeal and we litigate what the law means, and anything that we could do to add clarity and to address inequities and gaps in our laws. And I just bring up that we have evolved, and I want to recognize the work that this body has done, again, and we are grateful that the most recent change had to do with being mentally capacitated as a result of intoxication, because that, and that was in direct response, I think, Senator Blas Jr. and Senator Torres. And that was in response to law out of Michigan, that, a case out of the Michigan Supreme Court, that we had to look at and anticipate what the impacts would be in Guam. So anything that we can get to address that ahead of time, and to be on the same page, so to speak, so we're not having any ambiguities in laws, I think would benefit all of us.
You mean, you want the judges to interpret the laws before you have a case before them?
I think recognizing where there's ambiguity and addressing it on the front end. And a good example of that would be-
Well, there are many jurisdictions that don't have judges, so that's why I'm asking, because apparently, those states found that they did not want judges on their law review commissions. So, and I, I can see, well, I'm just going to read from the testimony that was submitted before, on behalf of the court. First, conflict, conflict issues may arise from judiciary employees serving on the commission. Under Bill 146, the Chief Justice is authorized to appoint two members of the commission, one of whom the bill contemplates will be a judge. The appointment of a judicial employee or judicial officer may create a conflict under either the judiciary revised code of conduct or the model code of judicial. Under these rules and out of respect for impartiality and the independency of the judiciary employees and the judicial officers are generally prohibited from commenting on matters that may come before the courts to include the reality of any proposed or existing legislation. If the composition of the commission and appointment authorities are not changed, we respectfully request that additional language be included to state that members appointed to the commission by the Chief Justice who are employees or judicial officers may participate in the activities of the commission. And, and there's more, but, and then there's another testimony that said, this one was from the Office of the Attorney General. I do not believe the judiciary should be part of the committee for Title IX revisions. How I do support that they'd be there for the Title VIII criminal procedures provisioned, with the exception of the compiler, she should be in all of these commissions. But, and there was other discussion throughout that hearing, and I'm sure in other states because of that concern. And here we are in Guam, where it's not like maybe in other states where the judges who may be appointed to the commissions are not the actual trial judges in the criminal cases. I'm, you know, I'd have to look at every single jurisdiction there to see. I, I don't have that research that Chief Justice you're referring to about, you know, seeing judges on the other panels, but I did look at a couple just randomly, and the ones I looked at did not have judicial officers, particularly judges on these panels. Mr. Hattori, do you have any comment on this? It's really my only concern. Obviously, we all want to revise the codes and bring them to be consistent, and I just want to ensure that, you know, we're not, that we can do this. Many other jurisdictions, in fact, have done this in an independent entity altogether, right? Outside of the legislature, outside of the judiciary, and an independent. And if we're funding it fully, then perhaps that's, that's another way to go. But, Mr. Hattori?
So, so there's two parts to the commission. One is identifying all of the, the repeals that have occurred due to court rulings by the Guam Supreme Court, the US Supreme Court, and I don't think a judge is going to have a problem discussing those things. But if it's, I think they would have a problem discussing proposed changes to substantive law. But I think, you know, the judges, any judge who sits on the commission would probably DQ themselves if it made them violate their oath as a, as a judge, because they're bound by ethical guidelines themselves. But, and the judges are very conscientious about this, so I don't think they would jeopardize that. But I think they would be able to provide input on particular laws that have been repealed, or, and what the current state of the law is, and help us put it together in a, you know, comprehensive and, you know, annotated manner. But I don't know about whether they would participate in the part where they're proposing changes in what the, you know, the penalty would be for a particular crime, or what the essential elements would be for a crime. And I don't know if the commission, you know, that's a different part of the commission, right? Part of the commission is to basically compile existing law, make sure it's coherent, and put together in a, in a manner that the ordinary person could understand. So I think the judges do have, they could provide a lot of value in that respect. But I'm pretty sure that if there is a conflict between their duties and their ethical responsibilities, that they will err on the side of caution on a case-by-case basis.
Or else they would have to recuse themselves in any case? For example, if they were part of the commission that's setting criminal sexual conduct penalties or lining them up, would they then have to recuse themselves from every criminal sexual conduct case?
Yeah, that's, yeah, and so that's, I'm not sure if that's the goal of the commission, to recommend like a sentencing structure, or just to raise the fact that there are certain inconsistencies within the current sentencing structure. I think that the legislature alone has the ability to establish substantive law, and so the commission would probably just make recommendations, so they won't really be, you know, advocating necessarily, just identifying that there, these are inconsistencies that might need to be addressed.
Okay. I don't see it like that, I guess, because this is a very substantive recommendation commission, it looks to me, as compared to the existing Law Advisory Review Committee, or, there's another one that exists, and I think that's what they do. They're supposed to show us that these two codes conflict with each other, their, the structure, format, organization, all of that is under their purview. The Guam Code Advisory Commission, and if that's been repealed by statute, or by, sorry, by case law, I'm sure there's nothing to prevent them from noting that to the legislature or recommending changes at this time. And I don't object to the judiciary being on, I mean, you know, as the Chief Justice stated, that they, they already have the authority to do the rules and regulations, or the procedure, rather. And we can fix the statute so that there's nothing that conflicts with that, but, yeah, I guess I am, I'm just trying to see why the other jurisdictions did it independent of the judiciary.
Madam Chair, if I may, Madam Speaker, I emphasize, number one, there are jurisdictions that welcome the input and assistance of the judiciary, because that's our expertise, and I think this body would be well-served by having some involvement to provide input. And if, if for whatever reason, a particular senator does not like what that recommendation is, he or she are free to vote accordingly. And as I've mentioned, and if there is a concern that a judicial officer will act beyond the roles of ethics that guides that judicial officer, then we welcome the Chair of the Judiciary Committee to be on the commission, so you can see that we're doing our job with integrity, with professionalism, and with a purpose in mind to update and improve the rules, the laws, the statutes, the criminal correctional code of this territory, and only act to recommend to this body and exercise its wisdom, whether to accept or reject what we, the commission, may wish to recommend.
All right. I'm just going to repeat that I understand there are jurisdictions that do include judicial officers. I have not been able to review those in detail to see if those are the same judicial officers that are actually involved in the criminal cases for those jurisdictions or not. A lot of these commissions have law professors, and it was raised at the hearing, so I'm raising it, because none of you raised it again after it having been raised at the previous hearing on an identical bill. And that was the main, actually, concern at that time, besides funding. And, and so, is there anything to prevent the judiciary at this point from, from promulgating Guam rules of criminal procedure?
None.
All right.
We want to make it compatible, and, and so that it will be a supportive, the judiciary, the Supreme Court can today form a committee consisting of members of the bar, the public, the government entities, to look at the rules of procedure. I think this provides the incentive for us to have a joint effort and pull our resources together and try and do this as efficiently as possible. It's an opportunity we wish to embrace. I'm hoping the legislature can also look at it as an opportunity.
Well, I think, of course, if we're talking about resources, it's a great benefit to have the resources of the judiciary assisting this commission, any commission, because in most states, these commissions are comprised of- in most states, these commissions are comprised of all lawyers. And, you know, that's, so of course, that makes sense. But I'm just trying to say, we have a very small jurisdiction here. You are going to be practicing with these same judges who have made recommendation as to what a sentence should be, right? And I guess I just wanted to see if I, any of you think that's a violation of separation of powers or anything. And because there's currently nothing to prevent the judiciary from having input. Right now, we could get a list of the cases that have ruled that this law is invalid for one reason or another, or it conflicts with another. I'm sure that that's possible. I'm sure the compiler probably keeps notes of those things as well, that her input would be very valuable. And I don't think anybody's objecting to that. But maybe you can also interpret for me. What does this mean? That the, the members of the general public with experience and interest in the services provided by community-based and public interest organizations related, relating to the criminal justice system? What do each of you think that means? Because the governor's appointments to the commission are limited that way, and so are the chief justice's three appointments to the commission, limited that way by this bill. Yes.
If anyone can answer that question, I appreciate it. Too long of applause will end the hearing, okay?
I can try to answer that, Madam Speaker. The language that's here, I'll have to go back and check, but I think it may have been borrowed from some of the other jurisdictions we looked at. And a lot of it, too, might have come from, from the original bill. Bill 146. I'll go back and check where this language actually did come from. But I think it offers the, each of the appointing authorities, the ability to choose whoever they would like, if they would have something to offer to, to the committee, to the individual subcommittees, different areas of expertise from the community so that the community also has the opportunity to, to raise concerns or provide input.
Are these non-lawyers?
They could be non-lawyers, yes.
Could you give me an example? Okay, but it says, "community-based and public interest organizations." Does that mean they have to be a formal nonprofit?
If I may, Madam Chair. Or Madam Speaker, I believe that Mr. Jam had an example of including social workers, which would be a field interested and related to criminal justice, especially now, as had been noted previously with the advent of treatment courts. Social workers would be interested. And as Ms. Laxamana had noted, a youth member representing interests of the young person, younger than me, but. So the language appears to me, I don't also recall the genesis of it, but the fact that it is broadly written to allow the appointing authority some discretion, but also recognizing the ultimate goal would be to, for the betterment of the criminal justice system. And if I may go back to your earlier comment.
Do you believe these are, these allow for non-lawyers, then? And do they have to be part of a nonprofit organization?
I don't have the legislation immediately in front of me, but I, from my recollection, it is written broadly, again, to allow the appointing authority quite a lot of discretion, keeping in mind, again, the ultimate goal of the criminal justice system. So it could be a non-lawyer, it could be a lawyer, it could be somebody with experience. I don't think there's any limitation in the language regarding an official affiliation with any community-based organization. So again, it could be a social worker, it could be a social work student, a master student in social work, a nurse.
Okay, Public Defender or the AG, can you please comment? It says, "member of the general public with experience and interest in the services provided by community-based and public interest organizations relating to the criminal justice system."
It's going to be mental health treatment providers, it's going to be substance abuse treatment providers and their staff and the people that interact with those special needs clients. It's, it's going to be things like that, I would hope.
All right. Attorney General, do you agree with that?
That was our read of it because treatment courts are such an integral part of.
Part, I can't hear.
Treatment courts are a very integral part of a lot of what is going on at the judiciary right now. And each one of them has services that are offered either at the judiciary or through nonprofit entities. In some instances, I think Guam Behavioral has taken a more active role recently. You have the Salvation Army that provides certain services, both in-house and outpatient. I think the Department of Corrections, their ARSAT program is currently run out of Guam Behavioral as well. So there's been changes, but we read that as the intention being those service providers would have a potential voice or seat at the table in developing this.
All right. And so do you agree, Attorney General, that this commission is just to be pointing out conflicts in law as opposed to, it says in here, it's the reform. It's going to submit recommendations as to reform of the entire penal code, meaning sentences, reform of everything, it looks to me, but I don't know, because that's what the word that they use in here.
I can't, all I can say is that it's been 50 years since the laws have been updated and there has been a lot of changes since then. The extent of the change or where there are changes necessary, you know, as an example, Chapter 80 of Title IX probably doesn't require as much tweaking as, you know, the entire Title VIII would for certain procedural things that are based on kind of paper types of things. I'll give a very concrete example. E-warrants would probably be something that this commission could look at. Every jurisdiction has the ability to go in quickly and get a warrant through email and probable cause determination. Our laws don't provide for that. So there's a lot of room for us to even evolve with the technology that's available at the courts. And I can't speak, you know, if we get to sentencing and the range of sentencing, it would really be up to the discretion of the judges. I would also note that the judiciary has kind of broken down three civil jurisdiction judges and four criminal. And I'm not sure if that's kind of what they're contemplating, having the three civil judges be the ones that would sit on this commission instead of the four ones that handle more routine criminal cases. But that's just nuts and bolts, how the court is currently divided in their caseload.
So do you believe that, under this bill, the judiciary can appoint judges as members of the general public with experience and interest in the services provided by community-based and public interest organizations relating to the criminal justice system?
I'll be honest, Madam Speaker, we were just looking at our office and we get one seat. It's either myself or a designee. I wasn't really focused on the other members, but we can take a look at it. And it just, I would defer to judiciary.
All right. And then, well, I'm asking, because we're writing the bill and we're going to pass it, so we want to make sure the language is clear. So I'm asking what, how that looks to you, how does, how you interpret that yourselves? So we can have some difference or a consensus on how that is interpreted.
I would also suggest that there are former judges that probably would be very excellent candidates to be on this commission. Retired judges who wouldn't have the same type of, of conflict, but who are, have decades of experience as well and are familiar with the criminal code as well as substantive provisions.
Right, but that's not what the bill says. It says, "the chair shall be an appointee of the chief justice and shall be a judicial officer." And Chief Justice, maybe you can clarify. Is the court divided now where, I thought they do rotations, but are, is that correct? That what the Attorney General said, that there are criminal judges and they do not, they will not, they would not rotate in, or civil judges would not rotate to do criminal law?
They have specific terms. There are four, as the Attorney General points out, that oversees a criminal docket, four judicial officers, and three judicial officers that have a civil docket. And they rotate every four years. And it could very well be that a specific judge, while they need, they need to rotate their dockets, and they're four-year terms.
Okay, so they, it's possible that civil judges today will be criminal judges.
That's correct.
Four years from now. All right, thank you. And then.
But let me just say that this is a two-year sunset provision.
Two years, yes. Yeah, again, I support a law review commission. I support funding a law review commission. My only concern is the composition of the law review commission. Ours looks, to me, markedly different than other law review commissions. Oh, let me just ask, we've got the Director of the Department of Corrections. So two of the members here are the Chief of the Police Department, the Director of Corrections. And if what you say is correct, that the rest of these members are going to be from nonprofits who are currently service providers, treatment centers, and that type of thing in the criminal justice system. The only lawyers on the panel are the Attorney General of Guam and the Executive Director of the Public Defender Service. It looks to me like mandatory lawyers, there are two. The rest are, are service providers in the community. To reform criminal, the criminal code. I totally agree with getting the input of everybody else who's a stakeholder when we're, for example, trying to discuss what the penalties are supposed to be or what, what are the most effective ways of treating criminal sexual conduct? Is it through sentencing, you know, prison sentences, rehabilitation, whatever? What is it? I agree with getting everybody's input, but when you're reforming the code on a law review. Sorry. Yeah, I just haven't seen that kind of composition before. Anyways, I'm, I guess I'll leave that at that. I'm going to look at the other jurisdictions. I just, I just want to figure out why we're trying to do it this way as opposed to the more common way with. Yeah, just one second, Mr. Chair.
Madam Speaker, if I may.
Go ahead, Ms. Peter.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Just, we did do some background research on other commissions. I know that you haven't had a chance to review. But as an example, in Hawaii, the Law Revision Commission that was recently conducted there was actually constituted specifically by the legislature, appointing the judicial council to.
Where was that?
Conducted, in Hawaii.
Okay, yeah.
In Hawaii.
I know you've cited Hawaii and Arizona and DC, or.
And Washington DC was, was another example, but Washington.
California, not like that at all.
California's Criminal Law Advisory Committee, the chief justice appoints 21 members, which include appellate and trial judges.
Oh, right.
And that was under the Judicial Council of California.
That's not the statute I just read. It says all appointed by the governor. So I'll look again, but.
Okay, this is the.
Are you sure that's not a, sorry, go ahead.
Criminal Law Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee. Yeah, that's, okay.
And committee on, let me see. Connecticut Law Revision Commission, the governor must appoint one member who shall be a judge. Another example, Oregon Law Commission, chief judges has one appellate judge and one trial court judge. So although, again, there's not going to be any agreement across the board regarding the composition, one thing that I can take, that I can offer is, based on my research, the DC Council recently the DC District of Columbia, District of Columbia Code Revision Commission recently completed a four-year program. And that took four years. They submitted December, December 2021, I believe, after four years of research. It took four years because their last Comprehensive Criminal Code Commission was in 1901. So I don't think we need to wait 120 years. I think 50 years was long enough. And what they did, the emphasis was that it was committees doing the work. It was committee members. In fact, they had weekly or monthly meetings over four years. And they specifically put in their reports when there was disagreement. So that way, the recommendation to the legislature would note that there was disagreement or if there was a disqualification by a member on the, on the working group, on the subcommittee as to a certain perspective. So one thing I guess I'm offering is to look at the experience of these other jurisdictions and to honestly trust the judicial officer with their ethical duty and to understand when it's time for them to say, "I'm not going to vote on a certain issue," again, which is simply a recommendation to the, to the legislative body. There, there would be not any substantive decision on the level in terms of a working group because there would still need to be a vote in the working group by the plenary committee. And again, ultimately, only a recommendation to the Guam Legislature.
I guess, yeah, that's a little unclear to me. So if there, are you saying there's no conflict, if they're just making recommendations as opposed to deliberating in the committees or, or on the commission? And, yeah, that's.
I understand.
And which ones are substantive versus.
If we do leave it to the judicial officer to look at their ethical code of conduct and to trust them to decide when for them, they will not breach their ethical duty for their work, again, on, in the working group. And then on the plenary committee, if they decide that they are even going to vote in the plenary committee that ultimately gets submitted as a report and recommendations to the Guam Legislature.
All right. Okay, well, I can understand the, the very important experience that judges have in particular and that they would bring to a commission such as this. For example, I'm sure if you, you know, questioned all the judges in your experience with, you know, handling or sentencing, for example, right? Which ones did you find most effective? Which ones did you think you needed more discretion on? I know that, you know, in theory, they've opposed mandatory sentencing, right? And across the nation, this was the trend, that the judiciaries were opposed to mandatory sentencing. They wanted to have the discretion. And I believe we've had testimony that way, you know, coming in here. And so that's all, I'm, I'm just concerned because, like I said, this was not brought up by me at the last hearing, it was brought up by, by some of you who are here. And, yeah, in very, very plain terms, said, "I do not believe the judiciary should be part of the Title IX review because it does create obvious conflicts subsequently where the cases are taken up to the Supreme Court and they're now tasked to decide on the law that had a participation in passing." And I know that's why the judiciary is also very cognizant of, you know, testifying on bills, on substantive matters and things. But, all right, well, I'll just take those all under consideration and I want to thank all of you for your testimony today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. The Attorney General will give his questions and his closing. Then I will wrap this all up, this hearing, all right? Senator Santos, I mean, I, last.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you very much again for all your testimonies. I truly appreciate this. Attorney Hattori, I'm very much interested. Do you have a written testimony for, you, you provided some very good.
We'll submit.
Thank you, appreciate that, okay? As well as, I got JAMs and can you submit testimony here? Thank you, okay? Okay, I truly appreciate it. And I like the idea of then as far as the social work too, so I got your testimony here. You know, I guess it's safe to say that, or is it safe to say that as a result of previous discussions we had in the previous bill that there was, we went back and we looked at our notes and everything and see how we can tighten things up and make things better? The difference between the previous bill and this, and Bill 311, is that safe to say? Chief Justice?
Yes, we went back and looked at other jurisdictions and we were guided accordingly.
Thank you. You know, and, you know, I appreciate the concerns, recognize the concerns that were brought up on both sides of the, you know, the panel here. And I, you know, been collaborating, communicating with the Chair already. He already, he already wanted me to start writing in the amendments into the bill. I said, "Hang on, wait, I need, I need the information first from, from Mr. Hattori." I said, "Hang on, wait, I need the information first from Mr. Hattori, as well as from Senator Brown." You have no objections with regards to the timeline?
We will submit this within a few days, in reference to that. We just want to get a sense of what the other jurisdictions, the intervals in which they come back and survey again to update the statutes. I think it's an excellent idea.
Appreciate it, you know, and I appreciate, Ms. Spada, you know, you recognizing and seeing that there may be some portions of other titles, other, you know, sections of the Guam Code annotated, that may be incorporated, or, you know, have, we may need to review this. Let me bring this up, 20 GCA, Chapter 2, Compensatory Relief. Basically, it says that if any person with finding any dog or dogs or other animal, worrying, wounding, or killing any sheep, angora, or cashmere goats, may at any time of finding such dog or dogs or other animal, kill the dog and the owner. I know there's probably a grammatical error in that area, but if you read it the way it's supposed to be read, I can see where it's still turning, may have some issues, okay, the Attorney General. So I appreciate that this is a start of a review, not only of the last 50 years, but probably the last century, based on this statute. I've never seen it, I'm sorry, I don't know what an angora goat is, okay? But then, now, we can find that on Guam, but it's in our statutes. And I appreciate that this exercise will help to bring those, you know, that up. Appreciate you taking the time. I'm, you know, very humbled and honored that you've all taken the time, too. I've got the Chief Justice, the Attorney General, the Director, and, you know, the head of Public Defender all in one table. Okay, I got that, I got that feather on my cap now, okay, on this panel. But I appreciate that, thank you very much. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I continue to work with you on these amendments and stuff, and hopefully get it back, get it on the floor.
Thank you, Senator Blas. And just to close it up, number one, when there was questions of ethics, we just recently reestablished the Guam Ethics Commission. Every one of you have an ethical responsibility to do your job and hold to that. If somebody has to foul against you, for me, shame on you. You know what I mean? You guys do your job, we have faith in you, we believe in you, and every two years, an election, we get to decide which judge we want to keep. So when it comes down to that, if there's some issues out there, please tell the people, so that we can decide it every election. And then we'll move on from there, because as far as I'm concerned, my goal is to get this bill moving. We need to get a review, 50 years is too long. That's, I'm only, makes me 15 years old when this happened. It should have happened a lot earlier than that. The committee will continue to receive testimony. Please submit your testimony to the mailroom of the Guam Legislature or through email at senatorjoessenauksen@gmail.com. Again, I want to thank everyone for attending this public hearing, for providing feedback and suggestion. Bill 311-36 to ours duly heard by the committee, and the public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is 3:05. Jesus mercy, and please have a safe day. Take care.